Lieutenant Wap, your planning board meeting in order. Could we all rise for a pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here I have it.
Okay. The secretary provide roll poll attendance, please.
Mr. Martinaccio?
Here.
Mr. Parentico?
Here.
Is this the room?
Here.
Mr. Freno?
Here.
Mr. Flora?
Here. Okay. All the board members received the minutes from the February 3rd meeting. Does anybody have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, to accept the minutes as written. Okay? Motion's made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding 33 Middle Bush Road site plan and lot line consolidation. Get a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Carries.
Is there any way I can look at the site plan?
If you come on over here, you'll be able to see the, what we'll do is we'll have the, we'll have the architect go through his proposal of what they're providing, what they're looking to do on the site. And then after he gives his presentation, then we'll open up the floor for public comments. Okay?
Good evening. Alfred Capelli, architect. We're, we're looking at 33 Middle Bush Road, which is a, is a building right up the street, diagonally across the street from where we are now, an existing, I'll call it the lapidated concrete block building. There's a photograph in the lower right-hand corner next to Peter of what the building looks like today. We've been here before, but to further explain what we're looking to do for the public is we're looking to fix the building and repurpose the building for contractor storage, inside storage only, no storage outside, no parking outside. So, for instance, in many towns, Joe the plumber, Mike the electrician, they cannot park their commercial vehicles in a residential zone in their house. So, this building would be used to park those semi-vans or vans or what have you in the existing building. At night, they would come, they would pick it up in the morning, go on their merry way, come back, park the vehicles in the evening. Also, what's probably going to be in the building is probably, again, Joe the plumber will probably have some supplies in there. The electrician, whoever rents the facility, would probably use some of the garage space, not only for their vehicles, but for, for supplies as well. We've, the, the, the application involves two lots. There is the lot that the building currently sits on, and then immediately to the left, there's a long, narrow lot. So, that lot is being combined as previously requested. We went to the zoning board for a use variance on this several years ago, and I believe it was at the request of the zoning board, I don't remember, or the planning board, to combine these two lots. And as part of this application, we're combining this to one single lot. So, we can never do anything else with the other lot, or to be honest with you, with this, with this building. The building is, the footprint is what it is. It's not being enlarged. There is a, some exterior elevations. Next to Peter, there's a nice rendering on the chair over here of what the building's going to look like in its repurposed fashion. We'd like to think it'll be an asset to the streetscape here as you go by on Middle Bush Road. Parking is entirely to the right of the building as you look at it, and the parking has been enlarged several, several iterations at the request of the planning board to allow vehicular access of larger trucks, if you will, to come and circumnavigate the parking lot to, so you're not backing up onto Middle Bush Road and backing in or backing back out. So, the idea is whatever delivery trucks, there may or may not be, of whatever size it's perceived that we're going to have delivery trucks here, whatever size, we have an oversized parking lot to facilitate a truck movement of whatever size has been deemed by, by the board, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, pretty much a new septic's going in, not that it makes any difference. It's subsurface. We have a landscaping plan showing what the landscaping is. The board had requested that we locate all the trees, which we discussed, most of the trees are coming down in the vicinity of the parking lot anyway, but we had the surveyor go out there and locate all the trees, and on that tree location plan, we're suggesting all the trees that are coming down. We're not saving any trees for the sake of...
I wrote it down so that we make sure that...
Being tree hovers here. Again, I think perhaps it was discussed that vehicular access was more important than that, but again, we can, we can discuss it this evening. So, I think since the last time we were here, not several weeks ago to talk about starting on the building, but prior to that, we have a lighting plan. We revised the landscaping plan. You have the tree locations. We've tried to fill in some of the missing pieces that Peter and David had in their review. And I know Peter has several drainage and grading questions, which we forwarded on to our engineer to, to look at, and we'll pick up those pieces by the next meeting. And I see David has several comments. If you wanted to go over them, not a big deal. Again, this is dual, dual action this evening, perhaps. We have the site plan review, and we had the lot line consolidation. It's two separate, two separate actions here this evening. So, does anyone have any questions?
So, why don't we run through real quick just the, the concerns of the engineer and planner, so we could discuss those real quick, and then we'll open up the floor to the public. So, we want to go ahead and start with, Peter, if you want to start?
Sure. We will need to have something out from other county, just saying either that they don't have, they don't have any jurisdiction with, you know, the minor changes, or that they do need to issue something on it, because anytime you do, you do change an entrance, even though they had put it in, you're still making a change. We, we just need to get something from them. David's going to also mention that, you know, the survey, that was part of the package. That needs to be more in the form of subdivision, subdivision plat. Didn't really have all, you know, the requisite, like, information on it per the subdivision regulations. It was just, you know, a survey.
There should have been on the, on the plan that we submitted to you, the top, the, the stamp for the town, the signature block for the, for the owner, a stamp for the, for the border health...
Was there a plan prepared by a licensed landscaper?
Absolutely, 100 percent. That's the plan we submitted.
I think, I think Peter and I just saw the survey.
So, so are you saying that the surveyor's going to go and sign?
Yes, absolutely. We have nothing, yes, we don't have anything to do with this per se, so...
Just a plot subdivision.
So, we're just here, I don't want to say as a representative, but yes, Rob Eichel, and I think we submitted to you a meets and bounds description that he prepared. He's going to stamp it, he's going to file it at the county clerk's office.
I didn't have this planned, did you?
No.
With the title?
No.
With the blocks on it and such?
Okay. I don't know if there's...
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't, I didn't have it.
It's okay. We, we...
That's fine. Not a problem. That's, it's mine.
We'll get it. We'll get it.
That's fine.
Okay. Do you have a separate plan that has the details of the sewage, sewage disposal system and the water?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You want that submitted?
I mean, I'm not going to comment on it, but it just should be part of the package.
That's fine.
You know, it's a, you know, a health department. How far are you with health department?
We probably haven't had a review in months.
But you've submitted something to?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, it's, so it's in their hands?
It's in their hands, yes.
Okay. All right. And then, just had a bunch of small comments on the storm drainage report. Nothing that's going to make any kind of an impact. I don't see any kind of an, I don't see any, any issue with the concept. It's just, there needs to be just a couple of things cleaned up as far as the calculations go, and then just, do you know if anybody's expected the drywells?
No, and, and I spoke to Troy, our engineer, about that on my way over, and he says, "I looked at the memo real quickly, and there aren't any existing drywells. There are only new drywells." So, I says, "Maybe that's my fault for not clarifying that they're new drywells and not existing drywells, so there's nothing to inspect, et cetera, et cetera."
Yeah.
So, we'll clarify that in our next submission on top of answering the few questions that you had.
All right. Then if, if those are, if those are new, then could you just show a detail for the drywells? Maybe it was on there, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was on there.
Okay. So, you can just double check that. That's it for us.
Okay. You're up, David.
So, the, our first comment has been sort of deemed irrelevant regarding the neighboring property encroaching on the applicant's property.
Right. I think Jim, we asked Jim that several meetings ago, and I think as a matter of record, he said it wasn't an issue.
Right.
So, that's probably a matter of the minute.
Correct. It's a non-issue.
So, that's, that's a non-issue.
Peter mentioned the subdivision plat. We do see item number four, that there is signage shown on sheet S3.
Yes.
And the planning board may have a point of view with respect to the size of those smaller signs.
On the building, you mean?
No, on the freestanding side.
Okay.
So, on your, on your, so you have proposed a sign?
Yes.
Looks like a monument sign to be put up with a 33 Middle Bush on it, in larger letters, and then you have in two-inch letters, you're showing for the individual tenants to have, I guess, a sign if they wish to have one there. We think that the, the two-inch might be a little hard to see when you're driving at 40 miles an hour on Middle Bush Road.
Well, my, my, I'm going to go up to the...
Sheet S3. Do you want to?
Yeah, S3.
Actually, I'm not a, even though we put it on the plans, according to the course of the applicant, I'm not a big fan of having three or four little identifying signs, in my opinion. My take on it is 33 Middle Bush Road, period, and that's it, and that's, that's your destination. I don't need, myself, I thought this is where you were going, if we don't put Joe the plumber, Mike the electrician there, I'd be fine with that, and it just says the address. So, I don't know what the flavor of the board is.
I think the, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but I mean, even if it was just the 33 Middle Bush, if everybody's happy with that...
That'd be great.
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Here it is, right there.
Simple's a lot better.
Yep. There you go.
So, size-wise, everybody's good with it, so I mean, graphically and everything else, material and method of construction there, just a little, I mean, again, what is it, four feet by four feet?
What was that?
Not even four feet high, and I have no problem putting...
Yeah, frankly, we missed that. And it's in our memo that you should submit something like that.
I know, I know.
So, we didn't review it, so I'll give you...
That's okay. That's fine.
Yeah, I'll give you comments later on.
Are you going to light it?
Yes.
How are you lighting it?
So, right here, we have a little detail where there's some, there's this crown molding that's hitting, hiding some LED lights behind the crown molding, shining down on the face of the, of the sign.
Good.
Is what we're doing there.
Okay.
Al, are there going to be any signs above the doors, so they know which is which?
It's Mike the electrician.
Yeah, which is Mike's door, and which is?
Joe the plumber.
Joe's door.
I, um, I don't, I don't know how we can avoid that. I probably, again, prefer a suite number, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, but I know what these guys are going to do. They're going to put a little, they're going to put their own little placards here, there, next to the door, whatever the case might be. But I have no problem with, again, you guys know me, putting 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 above each one of the doors, and if they wanted to paint or identify their business on the glass doors, that's their method of identification. I don't want this thing to be, again, this isn't on Route 9. This isn't in a commercial zone. This is a residential zone, so I don't want to, you know, you know, as it is, again, not to be argumentative, but I wouldn't have wanted such a big parking lot.
So, you're going to decal?
But I'm not going to go there again.
You're going to decal the glass?
So, I have no problem, except for the record, we can just put numbers on top of each one of the doors and call it a day, and the only signage is going to be if they want to scribble something on the glass doors. You want to make that a matter of record, that's fine. I'm all for that.
Would you put a note to that on the, on the map, so that when the tenants come in and want me to issue the sign permit, I can say, "It's on the plan, you can't have one"?
That's fine.
I think letters make more sense than numbers, since you're 133, so then you can be 133A, 133B, but that's just me.
No problem.
When you were making your presentation, Al, you, you had said something about the parking of contractors' vehicles, that they would be parking their vehicles inside?
Absolutely.
At night?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That was the, that was the intent when we went to the zoning board, that there would be nothing outside, nothing even identified, no pipes outside for, for Joe the plumber. All the trucks are inside.
So, the trucks are inside, so that employees would park outside?
During the day, technically, if, they're dropping off their car. Some of them may be just dropping somebody off, and they may take that vehicle to, to the job site, the truck, and somebody may drive the cars, but yes, I anticipate during the day, there's going to be some cars in there. At night, after 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, that parking lot technically should be empty, although I don't know how we're going to avoid that. I don't know if there's going to be any stragglers, but there would not be any commercial vehicles in that parking lot.
So, should we have a note then?
Should be a note, yep.
A note then on, you know, the site plan that, you know, would say that, that there'll be no commercial...
Overnight parking.
Vehicle, overnight parking outside?
That's fine. And there may be something alluding to that in the narrative that we did 20 years ago when we first submitted it here into the, into the zoning board. We may have put something in there, but I have no problem.
If that was, if that was a condition, if that was a condition of the zoning board, then you should...
Right. But a sign stating that, so that there's enforcement capable.
Yeah, we need to be able to enforce it, so...
That's fine, yeah. I'm all for that.
You want a physical sign on the property too, in addition to the note on the plan?
Joe might leave his car there one night, you know, maybe it's broken, but no commercial...
No commercial.
So, there'd be no outdoor commercial vehicles?
Yeah. Regular, I mean, passenger vehicles are all right.
Okay. And, Al, if you would put the wetland delineation on the site plan and the buffer...
Not a problem.
As well. And then we just have a few site circulation comments, which I think you should be able to deal with pretty easily.
That's fine.
And that's it.
Okay. So, now that we've gotten everything out in the open, let's open up the floor for public comment. If you wish to speak, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there. So, anybody who wishes to speak? Come on up.
My name's Gerald Webb. I live at 23 Pleasant Lane, which is the far end of it. All of the water from the site goes into a cul-de-sac right there on the left.
Goes into a pipe over here, yes.
Right now, there's a, there's a swale there...
That's correct.
...which slows it down. The other end of that pipe happens, then the stream right at my house and on my property.
Okay.
So, I'm concerned that you would increase, are we going to pave the parking lot?
Yes, we're going to pave the parking lot. And actually, we have several other detention ponds, if you will, throughout this area. I can show you on a...
Al, let me just ask you to pick up the microphone, just so they...
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, we're not just depending upon whatever little area, yes, so we have a little, several little, again, recessed areas there that our engineer calculated would help retain, detain the additional storm water.
Yeah, we're, we're going to make sure, right, because...
Increase in flow?
There's not going to be any increase in flow, no. That's, you know, they have, they, any, any development project can't increase the amount of flow off the site than what currently goes there, you know, today, so...
Well, no, same water's there that was there before, but the swales and that slowed it down, and gravel parking lot resorts.
Yeah, no, understood, understood. So, they are, so they are putting in two small recessed areas with two outlet control structures that during heavier storms will hold back, you know, the water and then meter it out at a very slow, you know, rate, so, and that's, that was part, that was part of our comment, so, and we will check that. Thank you.
We're Joseph and Donna Terrico, live at 25 Middle Bush Road.
I mean, if I don't have a...
Absolutely. Yep.
Worth concerning. After they get this all done?
Yes.
How's that going to affect us?
Well, first of all, nothing is happening in this area in terms of increase of usage. There's going to be some storm water work, as suggested by this plan here. Okay?
We currently get no water whatsoever.
Because you're going to clean this prop, you're going to clean this property out, right?
No, 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 we're, we're not touching it. Yeah, we're not touching it. I think there's a note on the landscaping plan that says, "Nothing's happening on the landscaping, except those ponds there." So, everything else remains untouched where you guys are, and actually, there's some additional trees that when we denude the site for the drainage, there's going to be some additional pine trees put in closer to Middle Bush Road, so...
That is our biggest concern.
Yes.
If our well, which is our only water supply, is pretty far back if you went back there. It's not far from the property, so we're very concerned about that.
My well is right out here.
Yeah, we're not touching, yeah, there's, there's no reason, there's no clearing, there's nothing that's happening in the back at all.
Okay. Another question?
Yes.
If you guys go and sell this down the road and now it's commercial?
No, it's not commercial. It's still residential.
It's still residential?
Yes. We got a special use permit from the zoning board prior to when we came here, because this zone is residential. And so, the question was, you have an existing commercial building, what do we do with it? Knock it down, put a house on there, et cetera, et cetera? So, the zoning board would look at all those different alternatives, you know, who's going to build a house on Middle Bush and live, et cetera, et cetera? Not that you guys don't do that, but it was decided that, that perhaps repurposing the existing building, as you can see there, would be the best use to continue, but a low-key type of use, not an in-out use, not a retail use, or whatever it's been through the years. So, it's still zone residential, can do anything without, if anybody wanted to do anything else to this site, they'd have to come before this planning board, and perhaps even go back to the zoning board for those types of uses. And if I'm incorrect, you guys can...
It's true, it's true.
Yes.
So... He's only approved for this specific use.
Okay.
No other commercial uses.
You were very concerned, especially about the well.
Right.
What's going back there?
Sure.
Yeah, nothing, nothing's going to, I could not, I could not increase, I don't think anybody, the zoning board wouldn't have allowed me, and it is what it is. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Other public comments? Okay. All right. So, obviously, Al, there's going to be some items that need to be addressed.
Not a problem.
I'm not going to ask that I'm going to work on the building like I did two weeks ago. That's off the table. We'll get the final approval.
Okay.
We'll get the building permit.
All right.
We'll work on the building.
So, with it to state that we're currently, we're looking to, we probably look to adjourn this until April the 6th.
Okay, so, so Mike...
But he didn't finish, he didn't finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. So, so if we adjourn this to...
The good parts, the good parts coming.
Right. So, if we adjourn this to April the 6th, all right, you would need to make a resuminal with all the corrections that we're looking for, just to address all the open-ended stuff that was discussed this evening by March the 10th.
Week from tomorrow.
That way, it could be reviewed in enough time prior to that April 6th meeting, then depending upon how the rest of the board feels, we could authorize tonight for the planner to prepare a resolution for that meeting also. And assuming everything has been brought into alignment for an approval, we could vote that night, and then we would be done with it, and you would be able to move forward.
Subdivision and the second...
With conditional.
Sure. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm good with that, I guess.
You're in agreement for that?
Yes. Okay. I'm not going to argue.
All right. So, the first thing we need to do is, need a motion to adjourn the public hearing to April the 6th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. So, we will reopen the public hearing again on the, on the 6th. Hopefully, everything has been submitted, and we can go ahead, and that'll be reviewed by the professionals. Well, our other item we need to discuss is, do we feel that we're comfortable enough at this point to have the planner write a resolution also for that April 6th meeting? If so, somebody make a resolution to authorize the planner.
Two resolutions. Two resolutions, one for the consolidation of the lots, the other for...
Sorry, yes, the, yeah, the two separate resolutions, one for lot consolidation and the other for site plan approval. So, if somebody wants to make a resolution to authorize...
Can I just ask Al a question?
Yes.
What's the siding on that building?
Ephes. Stucco.
Stucco?
Stucco, stone, cultured stone on the lower half, ephes on the upper half, asphalt chingles for the roof, little faux copper, green copper, canopies over the, the little entrance doors, if you will.
I mean, because stucco doesn't really go in that particular neighborhood, I mean...
Well, we try to.
It's rather putting like siding on it to make it fit in with the rest of the, the area.
Yes.
Sage?
Sage. I don't really care about the color on this one, but I, I'm, I'm not, what do you guys think about the siding? Stucco's fine in a neighborhood like that?
No, I kind of, I, I kind of agree with you, Ralph. I said siding is, I mean, it's going to go more with the houses themselves, and that's what we're, I guess the goal of it was to blend it in with all the dormers on the top, was to kind of blend it in with the neighborhood, instead of just putting a flat roof line on it.
So, 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 again, not to be argumentative, so then when I build houses in the subdivision, every house has to have the same vinyl siding on it? You're telling me I can't build a brick house?
No, you could, you could use, you could use... Cement siding, or vinyl siding, or wood siding?
Well...
We'd just like to see something in the neighborhood be consistent.
I think it's a beautiful building. I'll ask my, I'll ask my client, see what he says. We can discuss it at next, I think it's a beautiful building. I think the guys...
It is a beautiful building.
We've gone above and beyond what really needed to be done, and, and now siding, vinyl siding, cheap vinyl siding...
No, no, we don't want vinyl. We, we want cement.
No, come on, Ralph.
All right. What is there, what is there else of any?
Just, just bring it to them.
Why did you ask me to make it a brick or a real stone while you're at it?
Okay, that sounds better.
Come on. It's, it's, again, I think the architecture, looking at it from a distance, is what you see, not necessarily as you're driving by, whether it's horizontal siding or whether it's ephes.
You'll see it.
See the architecture of the building.
It's right next to the road, you'd see it.
I'd say so. I live right next to it, and we, we live on the other side, we live two sides down, but the white building that there is now, it looks terrible.
Right.
So, that's 100 percent bad.
Or we can make it better.
You can make it better.
That's, 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 that's one person's opinion, that, that horizontal siding, not, again, to be argumentative, is going to make the building look better. I, I would, I would disagree, but I'll ask my client what he wants to do, we can talk about it again at next, at the next meeting.
All right. We'll leave that alone. I will leave that open.
Okay. We'll leave it open, we have, we have comments, I mean, I mean, the neighbor seems to be fine with it, so, I.
I think we can give it.
I think it's more, I mean, if they're, if they're happy, right.
Have wanted, and, and.
But here's what we do, here's what we do, discuss it with your client, all right, we'll discuss it on April the sixth. That, that's something that really we can, we can hammer on the sixth, so, why don't we, at this point, we've finished, uh, we still need to vote upon whether or not to authorize the planner.
I will make that motion.
You're gonna make the motion authorize the planner to write both resolutions?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We did have that one thing about the curb though, with the truck turnaround.
That, we discussed that earlier.
It's on the, okay.
Yes. Is that correct, Al, we discussed the truck, the turning radius?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, David had, David had one or two comments that I think I'm going all over one of the curbs maybe by four or six inches or so.
Okay.
We'll try to resolve it.
All right.
In the next, uh, month, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm March tenth.
Okay, so, we'll all get there.
Thanks.
See ya.
See you. I'll leave all this here for you, Michelle.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding the Hindu Samaj amended site plan, uh, parking lot.
So we've drafted a resolution. And I went over the conditions with Michelle.
Okay.
And we've got a couple of changes. At the bottom of the second page, item D has been resolved, so instead of what's there at item D, it would basically be a condition that would say that they must get curb cut approval from the highway superintendent, town highway superintendent.
Okay.
Then it would be a condition E, which says essentially that they must finalize the lot consolidation and file the plat with the county clerk's office before you would sign the site plan. And the rest of the resolution remains intact.
Okay. Okay, so you've basically gone over the rest of the resolution and you have no other concerns with it?
No, there should be, there's that resolution.
It would be just those two amendments to the resolution.
Right, and there's also, should be a tree felling.
We need to talk about that, but maybe separately.
Yeah, but I didn't get, no issues with.
So, but, yeah, that would be separate on top of the, so, the first item that we're dealing with this evening is the, um, the amended site plan approval um, for the parking lot, um, so as long as you're okay with the, the amendments to this, I guess we can go ahead and vote on the amended site plan approval.
Yes, yeah, I love that term.
Okay, so at this time, we, we have a, a motion to approve the Hindu Samaj amended site plan, um, as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, motion carries, so, with that being said, now, the other one, obviously, is, I guess there was some mention regarding, um, the tree felling permit to cut down at least fifteen trees prior to the, uh, end of the month for the Indiana bat. Looks like there's gonna be a bond amount required for seventy-five hundred dollars.
I recommended, um, uh, Michelle, I recommended seventy-five hundred dollars just using a figure of, um, five hundred dollars a tree, you know, for restoration, that's, that's probably what you can buy and, buy and plant a tree for, so, that's how we came up with the seventy-five hundred. I think you proposed five.
Okay. And I believe every, everything, Barbara, everything else is in order then for the, to meet the, the conditions?
You submitted a plan for the tree felling already?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that, so we'll need to have the bond put on the town board's agenda for next Monday?
Yes, I'll give them a letter tomorrow and.
Right, and I'll send.
And I already let them know.
Okay, so we already know that's happy, so we'll need the bond in place, so a check or whatever, uh, and then, once the town board approves it, I think, we usually meet out at the site, so we'll meet you out there just so you can point out what's happening.
Do you need the bond submitted before or after the town board? It depends, if you wanna start Tuesday morning, you should submit it Monday.
We should have it with, is it, and you have to let Jim Heran know how you're doing this, it's a check, surety bond, cash, like what are you, how are you placing it on?
Yeah, we just accept a check. They'll accept a check, but they'll usually wait till it clears, so if you want same day, you don't.
Has to be a certified or a bank check.
Okay, so, we'll get you certified, right.
Okay, so, I mean, it sounds like everything's in order regarding the tree felling, um, approval, we need a motion to go ahead and approve the felling of the fifteen trees.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Just so we don't have any issues at the site, although you were there for tractor supply, that's just felling the trees, it's not removing them or stacking them.
Right, it's just knocking down.
Yep.
And I don't think they'll be coming in with a fellow buncher like Eric to other side.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, welcome. Okay, um, our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding the lot line realignment for Nussbickel Brothers Realty Site Plan and Lot Line Realignment.
Good evening, I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design with an engineer for the applicant.
Okay, good evening, um, obviously you've received the two resolutions for the plan?
Yeah, I've had a chance to review them, I, I did have a comment on both of them, and I think it's probably best if David's in the room for me to, because I believe he prepared them, so, he just had to step out for a second.
Yeah, he did, um, okay, so we probably wanna.
Just, just in essence, what it is, is parcel seven, six, three, six, five, six, which is included in both resolutions, is the vacant parcel that's on the south side, it's owned by the applicant, um, we've noted it to be not in the application on the map, it's fine if it's in the application and in the resolution, if it stays in the resolution though, then there'll be four lots at the end of the day, so I just wanna make sure that the resolution either reads that there's five before, and then there's four after, if it's including that parcel, or on the contrary, if it excludes that parcel, then it would be four existing, three at the end of the day.
Okay, so it's supposed to be the four existing which are, which are being converted into three, correct?
Correct.
I think since we've deleted all the way across as four into three, we should keep it that way, one of the parcels is a vacant parcel that is not included in the, it's owned by the applicant but not included within the application, but you have it listed in the resolution.
Okay, okay.
So we should just delete it from both resolutions.
Sure.
So that would be that parcel, seven, six, three, six, five, six, David?
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Was that the only thing?
Yeah, but it's, it's written in both resolutions, so just a couple of spots in there where, there's a couple of different paragraphs where it's five into three, so.
Okay, we'll change that, and then if you wanna entertain these, the subdivision has the neg deck in it, so you would do that one first.
Okay, all right, so, but regarding this, we're, we're gonna strike that lot from this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, which, okay, seven, six, three, six, five, six is getting stricken.
There's probably one or two more places where we'll need to make some other minor edits, just to make it four lots instead of five.
Okay, but that will be, that'll be taken, that'll be taken out of the resolution, that's gonna, that was a, a standalone lot.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we need to, so, okay, if that's the only item that needs to be addressed, um, you said the, the, um, the lot line rea, the consolidation or the subdivision, that's the one we need to vote on first.
Yes, that's got the neg deck in it.
Okay, so, in regards to the Nussbickel Brothers Realty Company amended site plan, lot line realignment consolidation, um, the resolution of preliminary and final subdivision, can we get a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Approve.
I'll second that.
As amended.
As amended, correct.
As amended.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, regarding the second resolution, uh, resolution of amended site plan, uh, site development plan approval, uh, get a motion to approve as amended.
I'm with that, second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? So that motion carries.
Thank you, good night.
All right, you're welcome. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is Elgin Associates for an amended site plan.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. So we're back for, um, I guess for some minor revisions to the, um, to the site plan.
Right, um, we're back with the site plan for Elgin that was approved January, it's like December of two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
A little bit over a year ago, and what the applicant's looking to do now is there's two existing structures, uh, with the prior approval, they were both gonna become retail and office, um, so what he's looking to do now is the, uh, two-story building, just make that a single-family resident with the retail use remaining in the front building on Sergeant Palmer, Palmer Tier Road.
Yep.
So you, you would continue with a mixed use, um, uh, being in compliance with the zoning.
Okay.
So with our plan, that's the only change that we're proposing with the plan that you have before you.
All right, um, did you receive the comments, uh, obviously from the planner and, uh, the engineer?
I did get, um, Peter's letter and David just mentioned his, I didn't get that.
Okay, and then there was also another letter from Dutchess County Planning?
I didn't get that.
Yeah, you didn't get that, okay, um, the planner's letter and Dutchess County planning are pretty much in the same, uh, pretty much. Yeah, so there were, there, I think, two big, two comments, I guess, that were, um, that they thought should be looked at, one was the size of the parking lot, um, being that we're reducing the intensity on the property, um, the zoning code does allow for, you know, lesser number of parking spaces, and without the site, you know, having been built out already, um, their recommendation was to, you know, to reduce it down to, um, I believe it's eleven parking spaces from the, uh, I think nineteen that's currently proposed.
Uh, seventeen.
Huh?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, sorry.
Yeah, the, that's something we did discuss when we were preparing the application, and the applicant was hoping to keep the parking as proposed because even in the future, if they wanna go back to a retail situation for the, you know, they know they'd have to come back to this planning board to amend the cycling, at least the parking would be put in place, um, but it's something I can most likely discuss with them and, and cut that down.
Okay, so still you need to talk to them about it, we're even, um, the, we've earlier had some discussion possibly about, even if it wasn't, um, uh, they could build out for most part, but just not pave it, leave a, a certain number, I believe it was, uh, six parking spaces to be, you know, just left as gravel, um, that way it, you know, cuts down on the amount of impervious surface that's on the property.
Well, I think at that point, we would just eliminate six parking spaces with the arrangement that's, you know, that we have approved now.
Okay.
And then just, just make those six spots grass, but they would be at great, so in the future, you know, we would just have to convert that to pavement.
Convert that to pavement, in the future, if needed.
Something we can do.
Okay, um, I mean, that, that would need to be addressed, I guess, um, uh, the other item too, I guess, which is in both letters, is regarding a, um, a, a light that's on one of the buildings, um, that's, I believe, would be on what would be the retail building, is gonna shine into the, uh, you know, onto the single-family house at this point, um, possibly remove that light, I guess, so that there's not an issue.
Yeah, it's not.
With too much, yeah, too much light, and if there is a, a need for lighting on the walkway, they were recommending possibly putting some type of a, uh, you know, a smaller light or, you know, something that's just gonna provide lighting on the walkway itself.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, it's, everything at this point is, is very minimal, um, but those two items would need to be, you know, addressed for a submittal.
And there was one, yeah, there was one more thing, um, you wanted us to look at the landscaping plan to see if it's sufficient.
Oh, yes.
As per the county's comment, I think.
Right, so I believe there, was the landscape was provided in the previous submittal, uh, landscape plan?
Uh, there was landscaping shown, correct, yeah, it was minimal.
Okay, um, but I guess we just want that resubmitted with this also, correct?
Yes.
For, okay.
The landscaping plan from the original sub, at subdivision approval, I mean, application.
Right, that was submitted on the site plan that we provided.
Oh, that's the same, there wasn't anything more on the original?
No.
Okay.
So we'll review that.
And is the, um, are there steps into the retail, is that ADA compliant?
Yes, we set it up so it would be ADA compliant.
Okay.
So, and, um, as far as my one comment about, um, Dutchess County Health Department, I mean, I know it's a small change going from, um, retail to, um, single-family, so if you could just, I, I assume you had to go get, you know, water system approval for the well?
No, the last time we did because it, it's, um, connected to both the, uh, the town water and sewer.
Oh, cause I thought you said in your narrative that it was on a well.
Well, I was, I'd have to double-check that, but I thought.
I mean, if you're definitely connected to water, then, yeah, I mean, the comments moved. I just, I got, I got your narrative here, so let's see, when it said water supply, the buildings will continue to use, utilize the existing well.
Okay, that's my mistake, I forgot about that, I, I know there's water out in that road, I assumed that would be connected to that, but.
Do you show that, do you show that in the plan, the connection to the town water?
No, I didn't see it there, had it pointed out, for some reason I, I think that was the site plan that did across the street, um, where we connected to the water.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would be continuing to use the well.
Oh, wait, so hold on a second, so you are gonna use, are gonna use the well here?
Yeah, yeah, I just looked at the plan now, we would continue to use the existing, we're gonna connect to the sewer.
Okay. All right, so.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's all right, so, um, so you must have gotten board of health approval for this before, right, for the water system?
I don't believe that was required at the time.
Really?
But that's something I can look into.
Yeah, I mean, what was, what was on the site before, it was?
Um, it was, um, home, I believe.
Nursery school a couple of years ago.
I mean.
I know there was, uh, I think in the two-story, there was two rentals in there.
Yeah, one of the buildings had been a nursery school for a lot of years, honey, honey tree, daycare or something.
Yeah, I mean, if it was the, I mean, it should've, it should've had health department approval for, you know, the water system, for chlorination or, or, you know, whatever, if it's a commercial use, and the one, and, uh, the one well is servicing both structures, right? So there's gotta be a central.
Right, so I'll reach out to the health department on that.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay. So I guess we're pretty much gonna have to, we're, wait until they get some, a new submittal in?
Sounds that way, yes.
Okay. All right, um, so I guess at this point, it's just, they make a submittal, um, correct, you know, with all the items that have been brought up tonight, um, this is a minimum. This is a minimal change in the use, 'cause really no new structures. Actually, it might end up actually, actually lowering the intensity of the use of the property as originally proposed. I don't see any need for a public hearing, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. If somebody, if nobody feels that we need a, we can, we need a motion to waive the public hearing.
Can we do that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, so motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that, so we waive the public hearing requirement, but I think that we need to get, I'm not sure if we feel comfortable with a resolution yet for this, I mean, it's a...
If it needs Health Department approval, I guess we can make it.
Is it something as...
Well, it could be a condition.
You, conditional approval for the Department of Health and everything else?
We could do that.
Okay. So we, assuming you get everything together, we can authorize the planner to write a resolution for the April sixth meeting.
Okay.
If, if you're in agreeance, you would need to submit as soon as possible all the items for the site plan.
I could have this done in a couple days.
So we said, yeah, we said, you know, the tenth for some, for someone else.
Somewhere in that, in that ballpark, at the time.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, and I'll have it in this week.
Okay, so if you get that submitted to the office, that way it gets sent out to planner and engineer to review, we can authorize the planner to go ahead and write the resolution, you know, for approval at the April sixth meeting.
Okay.
And that would be dependent upon what the rest of the board feels.
Fine with that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, so we need a motion to authorize it?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill.
Bill, can I see outside?
All right, so, our next item on the agenda this evening is, is an architectural review, it looks like, for Gasland Petroleum on Route nine D. Good evening. So I see you brought...
I'm doing the architectural portion of the project, Chazen's handling the engineering.
Yep.
I did have a meeting with the town supervisor and the town historian to discuss color schemes and review the, what their original input is on the building, so I can go through this now and how we arrived at this point.
Okay, if you want, yeah, I mean, you might as well share with us, 'cause we're not, we weren't privy to that information, so...
I handed it some in, so everybody...
Yeah, well, we got the, we got the submittal, I mean, whatever was discussed regarding it, and then we can kind of talk about what you have for a proposal.
Sure.
All right.
Yeah, just grab the microphone on the table.
Yes.
Okay, what we have is, this would be the Route nine D portion, or visual, so it's the south elevation that faces the street.
That would be, right, well, you would see it from nine D itself.
Right. The eastern elevation is kind of more in a northeasterly direction, so that's what would be facing more towards the, you know, Village of Wapinsers direction. The west elevation facing more towards the basket shop, and the north elevation facing, you know, furthest into the neighborhood away from nine D. What we are proposing was, you know, a club board sided structure, it's, it's a two-story, of course, wood frame. We are providing a three foot four high masonry, brick veneer surround around the base for, to kind of help ground the building. And then going from historical references, we looked at the brick building just north on the corner of Dean Avenue, there was a two-story south of the post office, and also the building right directly on the corner of nine D and Old Hopewell. So we pick up characteristics of all those to try and keep the features that we would find within this little hamlet. And so that's where we picked up the brackets, the covered doorways, and basically the hip roofs and things like that. So the proposal is for an architectural asphalt shingle that has a slate color that has the definition to it, so it's dimensional, so it looks like it has a little texture to it. A hardy siding, and so, since I submitted three different color schemes, I brought three different of the samples that I can pass around to you if you wish to see. These are actually the buildings that we were looking at, you know, through the nine gate corridor.
Okay.
And just so you had an idea of the canopy as it relates to the building itself, there were our three pump islands, and so we're gonna continue the same brick feel around the bases, and then do a, kind of like a shaker paneling that goes up and column wraps all the columns that support the roof structure. And at the same time, we're putting a little bit of a, a little mansard onto the canopy itself to, to tie in with the building.
Okay.
These are the, the other versions as, you know, you had the color...
Right, the different color schemes.
Right, the different color schemes, so the white one was the front one, the creamier color, which is sailcloth, and the cobblestone would be the, the other choice. So it was, the owner was basically pretty flexible in allowing, you know, you guys to really pick which one you thought was most appropriate.
Okay, and this is all based upon the, the buildings that were given as, you know, with some historic designation?
Correct.
Or some historic significance to the area?
Correct.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can pass it around, or...
Yeah, I think, yeah.
We have copies of that, actually.
Do we have a copy of that page?
With the colors?
No, 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 this is, no, no, this is something that wasn't included in our package.
No, I think it would be helpful for the board to have that in its package for still under.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I think they should have.
Yeah. Bring them up.
Yeah, just bring them up.
Yeah. I mean, this is something we're not looking to, you're not looking for some, like, real direction tonight, are we, or?
No, I think...
Only because we're kind of, I mean, you know, having half, haven't given half the information this evening, or, you know, prior to the meeting, we're kind of, you know, we're kind of a little bit at a loss, because if we knew that these were the buildings that we're, you know, that we're trying to compare it to, you know, to keep everything, you know, consistent through the area, it would've been helpful to have this in the package also. That way we could kind of go walk, you know, just walk around some of these places and take a look.
But it's for input at this point, 'cause I know that there's probably still some more site planning that has to be taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, I mean, the style of the building, obviously, does conform with, you know, the four buildings in the picture, it does have elements of each.
Another thing is that we were talking about, instead of a brick veneer, why not use a stone veneer to make it look like some of the foundations of these other buildings?
I, I can ask the owner if he's up for that, I think it's...
And the color choice is fine, I mean, but I'm more partial to some of the other colors that are historical, that you didn't bring up, or did you show them here, because there are some other houses in the area that have sage and ochre finishes that you didn't show.
Correct, I'm just going by what the owner had selected first as, as fairly neutral colors, and knowing that if you go through that, there is an abundance of white, and that was...
An abundance of white, whites played out, but I think I'd like to see something in a green tone myself, I mean, but we'd have to discuss it.
Okay, you can discuss, and, you know, I can discuss with the owner also, if he's willing to, you know, go that direction, so...
Except we're, we're really in the early stages, I think, of the product, of the project itself. I think we, I think the architecture itself is, I think, blends in with everything, it's just a matter of, you know, the final, you know, some of the finishes on the building, we might want to discuss it another time. Actually, now that we know which buildings they are, I mean, maybe we can, you know, everybody could kind of go take a look and see what's in the area, so we know firsthand.
Fine.
All right. So, I mean, this, this structure, I think, I think we're...
Sure.
I think you're on the right track.
Okay.
With everything, I think it's just looking for like a color approval, or, you know, what type of material to use around the base, I think that's something we're gonna need to, to look at a little more.
Very good.
Okay.
Could you show us next time too, with the signage, what that's gonna look like?
Um...
The which one?
Yeah.
The signage.
Oh, the signage, yeah.
Do we have a lighting plan?
That's all civil.
Yes, the lighting plan, and that, that's actually from the last meeting, that's still up in the air too, because we still haven't heard back from the mobile station. We were supposed to go out and do a field trip one night to the properties that they had selected, they were gonna give us a list of places that they thought would meet their, you know, the lighting at those locations would meet their needs, and at the same time would kind of give us an idea to actually go out and check to see for lighting levels, so that we could come up with a town policy. I believe that currently the last gas station that we did approve for Gasland out on Route three seventy-six, their lighting levels were, I believe, less than ten for candles at any location under the canopy, so, but we still needed to finalize, I mean, you know, a standard for the town going forward. So, and I know we, we left that as an open-ended issue from that meeting also, I mean, we still have a lot of little things, some of it's on our part.
No, I understand that, I, Crystal, wrap that up with Chazen.
Yeah. So, but I, I think what you have is, like I said, the, you know, the actual architecture, I think.
Yeah, the design is built on this case.
Nice looking building.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So, do we wanna, well, we wanna, you wanna take a look at some of these properties first before we make any...
I'm actually deciding, I'm...
Yeah.
All right, and we could hold on to that, obviously...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I can send an electronic version to them.
If, yeah, if you would, that'd be helpful, if you could send that to Beige, she could distribute to all of us.
Yeah.
That way we could just kind of get a better feel of the neighborhood.
Sure.
To make sure that this is all gonna, you know, go together. All right?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker wants to speak about this project?
I mean, we haven't scheduled a public hearing yet, and this is still very early in the, in the design stages. There are a lot of open-ended items, like I said, obviously, you know, this is just one of them, you know, the engineer was in at the previous meeting, normally we don't open up the floor until, you know, we have a public hearing. If you do have concerns, I don't know if you've looked at, you know, the project...
Send it online.
If, yeah, I, if you've looked at it online, and you do have some, some concerns, prior to that public hearing, if you could put them in writing, address that to the secretary, she'll forward it to the board, and then that way we're aware of the concerns. When we do have a public hearing, that will be, you know, posted, it'll be, you know, on the agenda, will also be posted on the town's website. We welcome your comments, we welcome you to come in and discuss them with them, with us, so that we understand your concerns fully, so that we can get it addressed with the applicant prior to any type of approvals.
Were there any traffic studies done?
The traffic study, they did a traffic study, but we, again, that's, New York State Department of Transportation is reviewing that, because it is a state roadway, so yes, those, those things are in progress, okay?
You can always submit a FOIL request and look at the entire file that's been submitted so far, so if you make a FOIL application, then you'll have the ability to look at anything the applicant has submitted, and what the consultants have commented on to date, but as the chairman has said, it's very preliminary at this point.
Yeah.
Excellent, because I know my neighbors and I would like to add our comments.
Yeah, but like I said, again, ahead of the public, you know, ahead of a public hearing, just if you submit something in writing to the secretary, she'll make sure that we all get it.
Excellent.
And we can review, we could review it prior to the next meeting, that they're, they'll be on the agenda, okay?
Is that public meeting scheduled yet?
No, not yet, no, we're not that, we're not even close enough for that. They, they still have to work out the issues, I mean, even, you know, some of the, the issues with the traffic study also have to be addressed, so they have to work through some of those items before we can even schedule a public hearing. That way if you, you know, there are questions regarding traffic, you know, at least they'll be addressed, you know, prior to you asking the questions.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay, all right. Second one. With that being said, is there any other business that we need to bring up this evening?
Thank you.
No.
Okay. All right, so if there's no other business, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.